Invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone, and I'm going to apologize in advance if I start coughing. Nasal drip, allergies, pollen, dog dander. It's got the best of me. Which it does, which it does every year. Earl Piner. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of April 3rd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the April 3rd minutes? Hearing not all in favor? Motion carries. Financial report, payment of the bills, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Hey Lou, if you get an opportunity, there was a company called Terraform Solar.
Yeah, that's the ones that have the solar, we pay for the solar electricity produced by the solar farm down 190 West Plaski Highway, next to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, I would, I guess what was...
They went to pay them.
What was throwing me off on that was...
Pretty expectable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh... I think we, what was really confusing me was that, uh... Uh, let's see here. Traffic control lights, street lighting, it had, it had to classify it under five different...
Well, street lights, yeah, that's probably, that's probably under public access.
Yeah, but it's all under Terraform.
I didn't remember why it was under that.
Yeah, it was, it was all under the... Maybe take a look at it. I'm sure it's right, but it, it kind of caught me off with the, the new printout too, so it might be finding it a little bit. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion, if we could bring Mr. Denenzio and Adam Gould up to talk to us about the Artesian Route 40 interconnect agreement. Uh, we have, uh, welcome you guys. And I think anyone that's watching on the Zoom, uh, needs to realize that Artesian has been a business partner with the town of Elton for quite a few years, and we have one interconnect, uh, which the town was obligated to be involved in when you had a municipality over 10,000 people, you have to have, uh, 25 or 20, 20 or 25% of, of water in reserve, and our reserve method, uh, was to partner with Artesian. And, uh, now we're looking at doing a second interconnect, and, uh, we had a few questions, and I think Louis sent you over what our questions were, and we'd just like to try to see if there's a, a negotiating item that we could do, and we just want to hear it kind of from you guys about the, uh... I know in the years past, uh, I think what, what got the board excited over the, several years ago was that, uh, when the governor called a drought, it kicked in where we were taking more water than the interconnect agreement was, but it was, it was in the agreement. And it, and it changed how much water we needed to take from Artesian. And, uh, we're still being able to produce a lot of water, uh, but we'd like to use as much of our water as we can instead of, uh, using so much from Artesian. So our question was, is how can we, uh... Do we have any options? Can I lay it that way?
You may.
Okay.
And I'll do my best here. A little bit of background, the original agreement for the existing interconnection started out with a minimum of 50,000 gallons a day, and originally allowed that to then have a maximum of 200,000 gallons a day. As you point out, I believe it was back in 2010, time flies, uh, the drought that occurred, the town asked for the increase, and that did kick in an increase in the minimum. Started out with an increase actually to 375,000 gallons a day, and then we dropped it to 250,000 gallons a day to try to make things more reasonable all the way around for everybody. The reason that we have that approach is you need a minimum to keep the water fresh, for lack of a better term, so that the water quality can be maintained, the chlorine residual can be maintained. But with that minimum, we provide the range, and the same thing's being proposed in the interconnection group for Route 40. So at a minimum of 50,000 gallons a day, the town could take up to 200,000 gallons a day, and there's no change in the minimum. But, and there's a provision that says, in the event of a fire or some other similar emergency that requires you to go over the 250 temporarily, there's no change in the minimum. But should there be a need for a more significant change in flow, then the minimum adjusts based on what the maximum desire is. The extreme situation occurred last time, but another way to look at it is, if you only went from, oh, 200,000 a day, isn't going to cut it anymore, we need 250 a day, well, the minimum then goes from 50 to 62, 500 a day. You don't have to jump all the way to under the contract, the max of the million gallon a day take. The reason for all of that on our end, there's two things that happen on our end. We have to reserve that capacity. It becomes capacity that needs to be available to the town upon your notice, and we need to be able to meet that demand. So there are things we've done on our system to make sure we can do that. There's a big difference for us between a temporary situation and a permanent change in that demand. And that permanent change in demand, the contract is set up with a 60-day notice because there very well may be things we need to do on our side to adjust our system to be able to meet those higher demands going forward. So we know we can meet them, but sometimes we need to do certain things, takes us time, costs us money, to make sure on an ongoing basis we can do that. My point of view, I mean, the town needs to consider this, your situation with a Route 40 interconnection is different than what you have with the existing interconnection. Your existing interconnection was to allow you to have the flexibility at the surface water treatment plant, which in a time of drought is their stream flow. Also, in times of high turbidity, you don't necessarily want to operate that plant, not effective necessarily, you take higher flows. The last two years, the average amount of water the town's taken from us at the existing interconnection has been about 325,000 gallons a day. So the town clearly has had a reason for demands greater than even the 250 minimum at that current interconnection. Understandably, as you point out, the town has increased in size and population, a lot more activity going on, plus these weather patterns, and I drive over the, the Big Elk and Little Elk Creeks every day, yes, that creek runs pretty dirty sometimes.
It does.
And there's a need for, for that flexibility. I'm not expecting the town's going to face anything like that at Route 40, because in that part of your system, what you really have is wellfields that you rely upon. And in a wellfield, again, we're very familiar with operating wells and wellfields, you may lose a pump. The question is, how long does it take to replace it? But the loss of that pump's unlikely to lead you to need something greater, let's say initially than that 200,000 gallons a day, to offset until you get that new pump installed. So that, to us, the kind of flexibility built into the agreement as proposed. I had the chance to listen to the session last week because, thankfully, you video. And to me, the one thing I didn't hear mentioned was the 50,000 gallon a day minimum allows you up to 200,000 gallons a day, maximum at any given point in time, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. So any other questions?
How many, how many, uh, just, as I said, I'm a little foggy today. How many days in a row would we, do we have before the big number would kick in?
Well, typically, we take a look at this on a 24-hour basis, because we're looking to say, a fire, et cetera, you know, it'll peak for a day, it'll go back down. That's the temporary that's allowed to go over. If it's going to be longer than that, the contract says, the town will notify us, because we have 60 days to make sure we can meet the higher requested demand for you as you best. So if you're only going from 200 max to 250 a day max, 250,000 gallons a day max, not much of a problem for us to adjust. But if you're going from the 200 to the million gallons a day...
Yeah.
We may need all that 60 days before we can assure you, yep, our system every day is going to be able to give that to you. We may be able to assure you that day one, it depends on what's happening on our side.
Listen, I think you've, you've answered it pretty clearly to me, and, uh, does anyone from the board have any specific questions or comments?
I think Joe was pretty thorough there, thank you.
You're welcome. Michelle?
Commissioner Brumel asked specifically, is there an instance in which the town's at the 50,000, and there's a situation where the town has to increase the draw? The town maintains that draw for a certain amount of time. Is there a situation in which if the town realizes that the town does not need that draw, that higher draw, can the town then request to go back to the original minimum called out in the contract? That's what Commissioner Brumel was asking.
Yeah, and I have two points to make in, in that regard. I don't think the town faces the same situation, as I mentioned, at Route 40 as you faced at the existing interconnection. From our point of view, that range going all the way up to 200,000 gallons a day with the 50 minimum should be something that more than adequately avoids that situation for the town. If something were to happen outside of that, I don't, at least on our end, we haven't figured out a way contractually to address it. I would suggest that, much like last time, with what happened at the existing interconnection, we all sat around the table after seeing how things unfolded, and instead of the minimum increasing to what the contract originally said, we amended the contract and came to a better number for the town than the original amount would have been under the contract. So we believe we have a partnership with the town. And it's a matter then of, if something arises, let's sit around the table and talk about what happened and what is going to happen going forward, uh, because, you know, let's say it was something you only needed for five days, and you're not seeing any reason you're ever going to need it again, that's a different conversation than it happens, but over the next year it might happen again and again and again.
Our other question was specific to, um, the interconnection at Red Hill. Yes, we did prove that we were drawing more than that 250, but if the town were to rely on another source and pull down what we were pulling out of that specific interconnection, could that be renegotiated, um, to a lower minimum table?
And I would tell you that right now, the answer is no, because we've reserved that capacity, we made those changes in our system, and that's all based upon our cost on our side and the term of the contract. So, you know, once this contract comes to its normal course, it's time for all of us to sit down again and say, where's the town? What do we do from there?
Any other questions?
That's what I was going to ask the board members. Any other question, Louis, anything you need to...
I recognize that Artesian, when Mr. Denenzio elaborated on the fact that it cost them money to reserve that money, because they can't sell to anybody else either. And basically, the, uh, increase from 250 to a million gallons a day would, and they brought the wellfields too. So I can imagine a lot of adjustments in your distribution system in order to do that. So they're very reasonable, you know, assumptions on everyone's part here, reality too, so... I don't really have any more questions. I think you were very, very candid in your approach and explanation, really.
Thank you.
Always available, so just let me know, but I appreciate the opportunity to help explain.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
I had to step out for a moment, but on behalf of them and others, we certainly, at a last-minute notice, thank you for showing up today, because I think it was last week that you made contact with me, correct?
Yes, that is correct, but we, we try to be as flexible as we can.
That's part of the relationship that you have with us.
Exactly, exactly. It is part of the benefit of, I live in the county, so I get to work from home for the rest of the day instead of going back the other way.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you, guys, I apologize for, I had to run out.
Understandable.
Thank you, Charles.
Take care.
See you guys. Okay, next up, Louis, you're on with the, uh, couple resolutions.
Hey, I'm the Assistant Town Administrator, who put all this together, and I appreciate and compliment for effort to do so.
You said you are the Assistant Town Administrator, what did you say? I didn't hear you.
I presented.
Oh, okay, that's not a problem.
So in your packet, you have Resolution R4-2024, and you have the strikeout version. And I just wanted to illustrate the, um, the changes in the language, and you also have the, uh, clean copy for execution at the end of the day. I put before you the new utility bills, and a couple of the nice things about them, the first page of that utility bill calls it out, what it is, obviously. The second page of that utility bill shows you what a delinquent bill looks like. The notice to the property owner, et cetera. And then the third page of that packet shows you that we can now tailor it to not just send it to the property owner, but we can also send it to the resident to let them know that the bill's delinquent. Because we've changed the wording, called it a utility bill, also instead of a late fee or whichever, we're going to designate a delinquent date. Because we changed language, we have to first initiate the resolution and in the subsequent, um, ordinance, because that's changing the code. So really, this is just administratively changing, clarifying language, changing some, um, some information on what the bill is called. Now, I can give you the rest of the details or just ask for the approval of the, uh, resolution and then the introduction and subsequent associated order.
No, I think we're, we're good. You want us to move forward on Resolution R4-2024?
Yes.
One other thing that I want to comment here on is the town's, uh, implementation of new software admin system, and that'll change the whole format of the billing and everything, and I think you have a copy of that right there.
We do, yeah.
And because of the way that new billing software will work and generation of bills to word sort, uh, A, B, and trash, that's a utility bill, then basically, we need to make some changes, or should need to make some changes in actual in the code in a resolution to clarify what the terms will be. So that, that's basically what's the driving force here.
I'd like to look at new bill, and then explain to us exactly how it's going to work, and I think it'll work a lot better. We have a motion to approve Resolution R4-2024, uh, clarification of the language regarding the fee to be collected by the Finest Department.
Exactly.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next is the ordinance three, you want to do...
So ordinance three, the purpose of ordinance three amends the Code of the Town of Elton, Title 13, Chapter 1304, Water Service System, Section 1304050, Delinquent Water Renters, by establishing the process by which property owners are notified of delinquent water sewer and trash collection bills, which is hearing after the utility bill, and designating late fees. Previously, what would happen is if a bill was left, the first bill was left unpaid, then a second notice goes out, and this is all to the property owner. For the code, the actual property gets posted with that red tag. These utility bills will do away with those red tags. So now what will happen is, the first bill, if it's not paid, a subsequent delinquent notice goes out, and then also the property owner receives the bill or a copy of that bill, and there's no more red tag placed on the property. Again, we also changed the fees establishing utility for a delinquency fee and also calling it a utility bill.
Perfect. Uh, we have a motion to, uh, adopt, or introduce, we're going to introduce, I told you I'm really foggy right now, introduce ordinance three dash 2024.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion of introduction of ordinance three dash 2024? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I guess I'm up. Uh, the first thing that I have is the, uh, reappointment of the Board of Supervisors of the election, uh, for a term of April 17th, 2024 through March 31st, 2026. I'd like to reappoint Margie Blaystone, Sarah Guns, Anne Marie Hamilton, Dave Massmiano, Paula Newton, and Kingsley Schaefer to the Board of Supervisors of the election. We have a, uh, motion.
So moved.
And a second, any discussion of the supervisors of the election? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I think the only thing that I have to report is that we have a, the Maryland Municipal League, uh, enters tomorrow night at Nick's Crab House. Uh, starts at 6 o'clock for all the board members. Uh, we've got Councilman Bob Metley and Councilman Al Miller, both are going to speak tomorrow evening. As kind of, say a few words anyhow, as our, as our guests give us kind of a state of the county. I forgot Jean over there, I got Jean over there. And, uh, secondly, uh, we have to move forward with this flood, flood study control, or flood, flood control study. Jean, you want to, uh, I, I don't have anything in front of me up here. So Jean, Jean made a recommendation that we move forward with, uh...
Verdantis.
First, Dan.
To, to conduct the flood control study.
Okay.
We received four proposals, uh, two were over the bid, uh, the grant funding amount, two were below, and, um, after review of the two proposals, I recommend we award the proposal to Verdantis, and I believe some of the folks, uh, from Verdantis are on the call.
Well, I think, uh, they were under the, the grant was $100,000, and they were under that amount, and I would recommend to move forward with, uh, Verdantis. We have a motion to approve Verdantis.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Verdantis, uh, let's move forward with that project. Anything else, Jean? Did I miss anything out there? All right, very good. Rob Massmiano, you have anything?
I attended the legislative wrap-up yesterday morning at the college. It was very informative, all the candidates spoke well, or all the official, rather. There was some bad news, there was some very good news. There's a lot of things happening in the county and in the state, and I think the future looks very bright for us. And speaking of the future looking bright, I saw the forecast for next Saturday's fishing rodeo, and it said 66 and sunny. Hold that thought. And that's all I have.
Perfect.
I have nothing.
Charles?
I have nothing.
Very good. Well, this is the time we open up the floor for anyone from the public that has anything to good say for the good of the town. If you do, please come up and have a seat and state your name and address. Anyone have anything to say for the good of the town today? Come on down. I want to keep wanting to say Sergeant Joffe's.
Captain Joffe's. I just want to keep it up. Uh, I think the guy, Ms. Guns, was in here at last meeting, and told you we've got permission for the garden down in Heinrich Manor.
Yep.
Uh, and I think somebody was asking for a map and exactly what was going to happen, so I put together a little bit of a, uh, packet here, our flyer with, uh...
Thanks.
Some pictures of some, some things that are going to happen. The first flyers is letting everybody know this plant's going to happen where.
Thanks.
And there's a map in there showing exactly where it's going to go in Heinrich Manor and for the Honorable Classrooms. Right now, we have three, um, potted plants, cases, uh, they look like coffins, but they're, they're nice, they're going to go. There's also a picture representing the water tank we're going to use to water it in there. Officer Highland, who not only got the wood donated to build the planters, also got Master Blaster to donate that 275 gallon water tank. That way, we can want to float it like once a week, and we're going to triple to water the garden. And, uh, what else in there? Yeah, he also helped make those, those potted plant holders. Uh, and on, on top of the plant holders we're going to have, we may also have some, uh, some little pots for flowers, cucumbers, uh, that they're going to go along with those potted planters. And Benoist has offered to donate a cubic yard of copse.
Nice.
Uh, which is nice. McDonald's has donated the ice cream sundae cups, so the kids during the event can fill up the cup with dirt, plant their own little, plant the seeds and take them home to, you know, just so the kids can take something out of it. And hopefully, uh, this garden takes off a little bit. We actually produced something this year, not like last year, we only had the four sunflower plants that died. But appreciate your support. Uh, it's on Sunday, May 5th.
Yep.
At 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. If any of you could join us, that would be fantastic. I don't know what kind of crowd we're going to have, I don't know what kind of feedback we're getting, but it's still, still young and, and it's throwing some legs real quick.
I should be able to make that.
Perfect.
I, I, Commissioner, I'd love to be at your rodeo, unfortunately, I'm called out of town that day, so good luck with the fishing rodeo. Uh, I know every year is a blast, we just love it, so good luck with that.
Well, they'll be next year.
They're, they'll be next year. So that's all I have. Thank you very much, Felicity, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Anyone up on the Zoom meeting? Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, mine's longer.
Hi, how are you? My name is Lisa.
Hi, Lisa.
And I am from, um, the President of On Your Own in Cecil County. Um, we are located at 223 East Main Street. Um, we provide mental health, um, and behavioral, um, support, uh, transportation, um, financial assistance if they need, like a work certificate, we can help them with that and pay for that as well. Um, since May, it's going to be the, it's nationally, um, recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. I had spoken to Dan in March, um, of what we would like to do for the town. On the white post, we would like to put Words of Affirmation, um, the posters would be weather resistant, um, from Ed, um, Art, uh, they're good for three years. We would like to start, if possible, where the post office is, because we feel that that part of town is kind of like, they don't get much recognition. It's from sunnies on downs where everything's decorated and things like that. So we would like to decorate the, um, plant posts, and with Words of Affirmation, a butterfly for freedom, and just make, um, you know, mental health awareness in our town. Also, um, let everyone know that we've been at the county for 20 years. The On Your Own, um, has been in the state of Maryland since 1982. Uh, we have not necessarily been at that one location for 20 years, it's been several. We're monitored by the, um, uh, Health Department, we get grants from them as well for certain things. But a lot of people don't even know that we exist in town, um, so we just want to put awareness out.
Understand. Lisa, what's your last name?
Hutton.
Yes, I should have known that.
Yes.
Dan's online.
Dan, uh, any comments?
Yes, unfortunately, I did talk with the On Your Own, we did check it out, and we did all accommodations, not, uh, is that, we're unable to accommodate this particular request, because if you do, if you do one thing for the polls, then you can do it for everybody, you open the whole thing up. So that's the reason why we looked into it, and it turns out I'm unable to, um, to accommodate at this time. We did suggest to go to the Elton Alliance, they could put something in their front yard, or they could put something in their kiosk as well, simply to get the information.
Lisa, have you met with anyone from the Alliance?
We spoke, we had a board meeting yesterday about this situation. So I went to Alicia.
Yeah.
And she advised me to come here this week. She could not attend, or she would, but she has classes today.
Okay.
So, um, very nice lady.
Yes.
Very informative. She seemed very excited.
Well, I would say...
It's a great place for it, that would be more afterthought, so versus all the...
I would say that we've never really allowed anything on our polls, other than, I mean, we've done it, like, the scarecrow was about the only thing that we've ever done. Do you have any artwork of exactly what you're proposing?
I do not, because the, um, art, um, would take a week to do, so we'd like, needed to have approval, because it is sort of expensive to do.
Yes.
But it is, um, a 18 by 24, uh, sign in yellow, and again, it is weather resistant with black lettering, just like Words of Affirmation, um, you know, you, or you can do anything, um, you know...
And what is the date that you're looking at, uh, having the, the Mental Awareness Week? What was that again?
Well, it is, it's the May, is Mental Awareness Week. Well, it is, it's the May is Mental Awareness Month.
Okay.
And I do know you guys have a Memorial Day Parade or whatever, we can take that stuff. I don't think it would hinder whatever you guys do, but we could take that down. I live locally, so we can always go up and down the street if something doesn't look right, we can fix it, take it down, you know, make it look nice. It would probably only be out for like maybe three weeks, nothing like the scarecrows for months or anything like that.
Well, listen, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we'll make a decision on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Yes, you as well.
Brian, come on down. State your name and address, please.
Brian Williams, thirty-five, South Esmond Drive, Elton, Illinois. I'm the owner of Craig Jury, all of my family. I've met some of you just recently, but we've had the food truck for eleven years around Cecil County. We opened our first brick and mortar at four twenty North Bridge Street approximately eight years ago, and approximately two years ago purchased the building that was formerly in this. Over the past sixty days, we started to experience more attention from the town in a less positive way in regards to our signage. I'm at a little bit of a conflict here, because my belief is that one of the town commissioners has a conflict of interest, and she's not here. And I don't know how to address that with someone who's not here, because I don't think that's fair to them.
And I, I would also say that I'm unaware of any conflict that she would have, so myself, I, I.
And if you want me to address this without her presence?
No, I would, I would want her present at that point.
Brian, for, for what it's worth? She's my next door neighbor, we talk a lot.
Sure.
And I've never heard her, I mean, I don't believe she does. Jean's a pretty good woman. I don't know if that carries any weight with you, but.
There hasn't been any, I, I don't even know what it could be.
Yeah, I don't think she has any.
I can speak on behalf of the board, and also, I've met Brian personally, when I and talked to him personally, but I think, and I would ask for legal advice on this, I think we should take this into a closed meeting and talk, discuss this, because it's a lot of personal stuff involved with it. So, I mean, based on what I understand, but I just wanted.
And this is, this is my conflict, is if someone's not here, I have a timeline of information that she can confirm.
Yeah.
And I have these conversations. However, it's not, I would never do that to anyone. I mean, you can try to be straightforward in all our dealings.
Can I, can I add? Well, listen, I'm, I'm going to ask, I'd like to have, I'd like to have the whole board here.
Okay.
And could we have you come back on May first?
Yes.
Let me finish what I was going to say, because I want to make sure this is for the record, because there were some issues that were brought up based on some email back and forth that I responded to, and that's how I got involved, not because of your personal information that you had with the board member.
Yes.
But just for the record, if I told you I was going to state this, I fully agree that there were some changes that the, the zoning department and you had some conflict with some things that happened, but then, we as the board members, this is where I want to put the record, was not aware of these issues, because that was really the department and you, them handling their side of their issues. Now, again, I'm not telling them back because I said, I talked to you face to face, because I felt as though some of us is being dragged, drug into some issues that we weren't even aware of.
I, I understand.
And again, on your part, I'd rather for you to handle your personal stuff with the other member. Personally, you guys should talk together yourselves and, and resolve that, and then bring your issue that you have with us to the board and the zoning department that had the issue with you. That's basically what I want to say.
And without getting further into this today, I have used every appropriate channel that I'm aware of. One of the things that stands out is all of your names appear on the letterhead from any correspondence from the town.
Yes.
So when we receive these things from the town, I don't think it's inappropriate that I send all of you an email and, you know, I spoke to each of you in regards to it.
I would agree with your, your thinking there.
Okay. In, in this case, again, the person's not here, so I don't want to get into it, but there have been a lot of that channel communications that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So.
I'm going to ask you, could we meet on May first?
Yes.
We'll have a closed meeting to discuss this.
But may I, may I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Downs, you and I spoke about three weeks ago, maybe on March twentieth or twenty-first, sounds about right. Do you remember, did you threaten to, to sue us in regards to this?
No, I just simply asked through your attorney's name, if you had one, who was authorized to accept service of process.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and my response was, was no, why would I need one?
No, that's not what you said. You said no, you didn't have one, and you would accept it yourself.
Okay.
That's what you said.
Okay. So there was a threat of lawsuit out there?
No, I can see where someone might conclude that they were going to be receiving some papers, and I think that's probably a correct conclusion.
Okay. So when you say that you're going to send me papers, did you ever send me papers?
You know, I, I, let me interject, I'm like Earl Potter now. I spoke to you on the phone one afternoon, I was picking up my granddaughter from school, and we had a lot of time to talk on that phone, and I told you before and, and, and that you have no right to say what somebody said and what you heard. I said, the only way that could be accomplished, there would be a third party, regardless of what you had. No, 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 sir, listen to me. Regardless of what you said, he said, there was nobody here to hear that but you and he, even if he said, no, hold it, I'm not done, don't throw your hands out. And I also told you to come in and see Chip Bromwell, and if you wasn't satisfied with what was going on about the sign, then you come see us. You have not done that in the correct order. I know, you in there nitpicking now, I'm sitting here hearing this, don't come in there and talk about Jean's thing, don't come in and say to our attorney what he said, this is not your point in being here.
Please understand, I'm here because on Facebook, Rob said this is the forum to discuss this. Jean is not here. I had no way of coming that Jean's not going to be here. You understand that?
Did you go first and foremost, the person you needed to see first was Mr. Bromwell? Did you see him?
We saw Chip at our property on.
Did you see him concerning problems that you had to come up with some type of resolve?
No.
All right, then fine, if you weren't satisfied with him, then come here and state the issue that you have with the planning department, okay? And then leave everybody else's name out of it. Now, you're also talking about the letterhead with names on it, the letterheads from the town, the Board of Education or any place goes out with names on it, because John Doe said something wrong, don't mean Sally Smith over here is wrong, just like she. As far as I'm concerned, man, I please excuse you, you're nitpicking.
Does everyone feel I'm nitpicking by asking Mr. Downs about his threat of a lawsuit?
Again, call him up and ask him that, don't ask us in front of the board, we're, we're here to, to regulate rules and, and regulations that the town has, exactly what I, the zoning department has to be the one that you need to deal with, not us, and then after you don't get that clear, then you can come and bring your issue with us.
Okay. So, and Brian, when I came to visit you that day, we went over that very subject, and you're aware of that procedure. And you're also aware that me, a business owner downtown almost forty years, I changed my sign last year, didn't change the name of it, just changed the type of it, and I had to go through all those same proceedings, including a trip at the historical board. They were very nitpicky on me about what I could and could not put up there. I just followed everything to the letter, went through it, it was done. Sometimes you got to do that.
Well, listen, we're going to meet back. I'm okay with your questions, myself, and I would also say that I did speak to John after he called you.
Okay.
And I would tell you that I was very appreciative that John actually called you instead of sending you another letter. So I thought that he was going kind of above and beyond, and I, I was aware of what he stated to me, and, and there was no, in my opinion, you may have interpreted that there was going to be litigation, but we're looking at a forty-two dollar issue here, right? Isn't it a forty-two dollar sign permit?
Not into it now.
Okay.
And, and this is, this is part of my issue, is what is being requested is not the totality of the situation. So any improvements you make require approval.
Yes.
So what I am ultimately asking, outside of the, the, the conflict of interest and things like that.
Okay.
Is can we submit an overarching plan for review, rather than all, than having the town fall back on language like, you must get a permit to maintain a sign, you must get a permit to repair a sign. The, the sign code is such that everything is regulated. There, what is maintaining a sign? It's having it on your property. If it's an existing sign, but what does maintain mean in that sense? It's, it's not within the glossary of terms.
Yeah.
If I, if I were to put a screw into a sign that fell out, should I get a permit?
It's a repair, right?
The code says you should. Who does?
Yeah.
You know, and, and these are my things. My question's for Mr. Downs, when someone says in a turn that there's possible pending litigation, I'm going to send you something. The normal course of action for a reasonable human being is to wait on the letter. So here I am waiting on the letter because you told me you were going to send me a letter. All right. Mr. Gibbons, at the last meeting, Chip was on Zoom call. You asked about my situation at the very end of the meeting. What, what was the resolution for that?
I don't know, because I asked about two entities. I'm not there to be judged or joined on what they were. That was between the two individuals. I let Chip know, then you could find out, but I offer first to you, to you, to come in here to rectify whatever situation needs to be corrected. I don't know whether you did that or not, it's not my concern unless it goes above and beyond what's supposed to be done, then it comes to us.
Just so my question is clear, at the end of the last meeting that's recorded, you asked Chip about my business. Chip could not hear the question very well. You said you were going to go to Chip's office. You had any correspondence with Jean before the question and right after the question? You said you were going to meet with Chip. I'm asking, did you meet with Chip?
I met with Chip right back, he walked over because he couldn't get it correctly on, on the, on, on the media. So he came over and I asked him if you had come to see him, and he said no.
Okay, so that was the question.
No, what?
So that was the question.
That was the question.
Okay.
Brian, would it work, you know, would it be better if maybe me, you, and Chip meet together?
Sure.
How about we do that first?
Yeah, the, the problem.
Okay, and I'll be there.
Again, the last thing I want to do is speak ill of someone who's not here.
No, listen, here's what we're going to do, is me, you, and Chip will meet together.
Okay.
And if it's okay, are you pretty flexible with time, or?
Yeah, I can make it work.
Okay.
I can make it work.
That's what, within the next day or two, you're going to hear from me and Chip, and we'll meet together, we can either come here, or we can come to your place and have lunch.
We, we, we purchased the building in Elton because we want to be here. I don't know how many restaurants in the last few years have actually purchased real estate within the town.
Yeah.
I don't, I imagine it's not very many. So we want to be here. So that's, that's.
And listen, we want you here also.
That's the goal. So there is no ulterior motive, I'm just trying to get everything out in the open. How can we make prey beatering and that property in Elton the best it can possibly do?
And, and we appreciate you, and we're going to be, I'm going to reach out to you personally, and we'll make that happen.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mayor, Mayor, for stepping in to get this resolved, but by the same token, I feel like some of us has been slighted, but needless to say, it's going to get resolved.
I hope you do.
I'm talking to the mayor, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town? Hearing none, we're going to have a closed meeting, and I need to have a motion, it's in consideration of matter, the concerns of proposal for a business or organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state, and also to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on the matter. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will not reconvene. And Mr. Ray Jackson and Mike Brown, you two won't begin to meet. Thank you.